I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and welcome you to our November the 23rd County Commission meeting. We're going to ask Commissioner Waters to lead us in the prayer and the pledge.
If you would like to pray with me, please bow. Father God, we are grateful for this day. We are grateful for this week of Thanksgiving. It reminds us to thank you for our blessings and for all that is good in our lives. We also recognize that some are struggling, sad, sick, and sometimes grief and gratitude go right hand in hand. So please be with our community. Please be with those who've served to protect us. Please be with our city, county, state, and national leaders. And God, I just thank you for all the many ways that you bless us. I pray that you will give us wisdom and discernment to make decisions that best represent our community but ultimately glorify you. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item on our agenda that will need to be moved from the consent part of the agenda to a resolution. It's item four in the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Make a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Maxi to amend the agenda. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have several people who have signed up for public participation tonight. We'd like to welcome you. Our standard rules will apply with three minutes for each of you and the times will show on the screen. So we appreciate you adhering to that. We'll start off with Angela Ravino.
Angela Ravino, Floyd County. I don't want to just make it very clear that myself and our group are not here to side with any political group. We side with the American people and that the right and the left be held accountable. This new legislation put in place does not one thing for the people. It continues the corruption and cover-up of what has happened in Rome. To you, the commissioners, your oath holds you to expose all corruption where ever discovered according to Title 45, Chapter 10. We are no longer asking but telling you to follow the proper procedures to have the said election chair terminated for all violations presented and for the said actions. We are also seeking the immediate termination of the said interim election clerk superintendent due to the direct violation of 45-311 through 45-315, also 21-270. No oath exists for the said interim. So this position should now be considered null and void with no further payment and the immediate removal. Failure to do so could bring further actions due to your failure of your oath. Now let's talk about the legislation new bill, a direct slap in the face of the people for removing the grand jury from picking that fifth person and giving it to you, the commissioners. So at this time, we are officially submitting our nomination for Corey Townsend to be one of the election board members. And if I can have everyone show of hands in this support, I will end tonight by stating we still continue to demand SB 202 be requested by you, the commissioners, to finally hold anyone and everyone accountable. And we, the people, now hold you accountable to do the will of the people. You see, we stand here for the rights given by God, not for the powers put in place by man. Thank you.
Next is Michael Morgan.
Michael Morgan. I reside here in Floyd County. Came to speak about some actions that have taken place in this elective body over the last few months. But I would like to start by reading again for everyone's better understanding from our Georgia State Constitution. Comes from Article 1, Section 2, Paragraph 1, "The Origin and Foundation of Government." All government of right originates with the people, is founded upon their will only, and is instituted solely for the good of the whole. Public officers are the trustees and servants of the people and are at all times amenable to them. With that said, I'd like to recount a couple of instances that I witnessed with the last few meetings. There was, I went back and referred to the 26th October minutes upon the first reading of a motion to amend the parking for the county buildings, okay? There were zero participants that came forward from the public to speak in favor of and zero that speak in opposition to. The second reading, which took place on the 9th of November, there were zero people that spoke in favor of, two people that spoke against. And immediately upon the conclusion of that public participation, this elected body chose to unanimously vote and pass this motion. The question I have is, help me understand the rationale for that. That is in direct defiance of two citizens that came and spoke in opposition to that motion with zero speaking in favor of. But yet this body chose to self-determine, okay, their right to pass this motion in direct defiance to the expressed will of the people. So help me understand that. Couple of things came aware recently about the definition of what our nation was built on. It's called a process called self-government. It's a hybrid of democracy and republicanism, okay? I brought documents to share with each of you, okay, and I encourage you all to read them. It's a basic, short, 25-page meat of the context of it with a few appendices. It's a civics and history lesson on the nation and the founding. It's called the 1776 Report. And it was commissioned in November of 2020, released on January 18 of '21, and ironically immediately pulled down on January 21st. So thank you for your time.
Just give it to me.
Thank you very much. Next is Andrew Conrad.
Good evening. My name is Drew Conrad. I live in Old East Rome. And I wanted to come here tonight during this week of thanks to give my gratitude to the members of this august body. My wife, Dr. Melanie Conrad, and I moved here in 2007 when she took a job as a visiting professor at Berry College. We only had 30 days to move across the country and we were lucky that my Aunt Gina and Uncle Steve already lived in the area and were able to help us. Our plan was never to put down roots in Floyd County, but we found a wonderful community that we really did not expect. And when that visiting professorship at Berry ended in 2012, I was highly surprised when my wife decided that she wanted to stay here. And gratitude for the love of this community has shown our family. We have consciously decided to give back deeply with our blood, our sweat, our tears, and our treasure. I've taken over scout troop 113 from Thad Waters and Andy Davis. I was the PTO president at the high school. I'm the district chairman for our county and the surrounding counties for the Scouts PSA. I've also been a robotics coach for the 100 Black Men of Rome, teaching robotics to those that are less fortunate than myself. Melanie has served as PTO member and president for more than seven years, and I was not surprised when she came to me with a news story requesting volunteers to serve on county boards. I cannot say that I was happy or excited by the elections board assignment, but Melanie told me that fair and open elections are the cornerstone of our democracy, and she, of course, was right. Unfortunately, I was right as well, and I got to watch firsthand as the crazies of our beloved community decided to personally attack my wife and our family in the most vile of ways. We've received death threats, unhinged tweets, and cyber stalking of our private lives. That cyber stalking by Mr. Swanson and his wife discovered a photo of a 20th anniversary gag gift that I gave to Melanie. Yes, for our 20th anniversary in July of 2019, I gave her a mug with President Trump that said, "You've been a great wife for 20 years. Really terrific, very beautiful, so fantastic. Other wives, losers, disasters," and everyone agrees, believe me. Now with a gift like that, you better have a camera ready to catch the reaction, and I did. I also had another gift to give her to smooth it over. And satire is not appreciated by those that support tyranny. As a son of the revolution and a ninth-generation veteran, I feel qualified to say that without any qualification of my answer. And tyranny can only exist in silence, and the most difficult part of this has been your silence. You have given my wife praise in private, and you have been silent in public about what you know to be true, and that silence is deafening. But I'm setting that aside as a scout is kind, and I'm here to thank you tonight for taking the old board's recommendation to reconstitute the Floyd County Elections Board into a five-member board. The crazies in the room think that they have somehow won some battle, and they apparently do not realize that that was the recommendation that Melanie and her peers made. But as the saying goes, crazy is as crazy does. And sincerely, I thank you for helping get that through as it releases Melanie from what she views as a sacred obligation. I leave you with this, and I'm sorry that I'm over. The only way to fight crazy is to confront it and speak out. You'll do with that what you will. But again, I thank you and I wish you the best of Thanksgivings.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Thank you. Thank all of you. We'll move on into our next order of business, which is the approval of our minutes from our caucus, our regular meeting, and our executive session from November the 9th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, those stand approved as submitted. We have no special recognitions, no proclamations tonight. We have no first readings. We do have several second readings, which will require a public hearing, and I'd like to refresh everybody's memory on the way we do public hearings. The different items will be presented by different people, some from the planning commission, maybe some from this board. And then the public hearing will be open, and those who wish to speak in favor of it will have up to 10 minutes. That's cumulative. And then those who wish to speak in opposition will have up to 10 minutes cumulative. At that time, the public hearing will be closed, and it will be moved back to this board for a motion and for action. So we'll start off with first, second reading. This is to adopt an ordinance of, to amend Part 2, Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances of Floyd County, Georgia, a new Article 4 to be titled "Key Lockbox System," and to amend Section 2, 1029 to be titled "Structures to Be Equipped," and to amend Section 2, 1030 to be titled "Installations: Owner/Occupier Responsibilities," and to amend Section 2, 1031 to be titled "Approval Penalty." I'd like to start this before we start the public hearing and ask Mayor Katherine Chuning, our fire...
Marshal.
Well, Mayor Katherine, I've known what you've done for all my life.
She's our fire marshal.
Fire marshal. Thank you very much. But I'd like for you to come up and just give a quick overview of this, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Mary Katherine Chuning. I am the fire marshal here at the Rome Floyd County Fire Department, and I'm here to present our rapid access program, Knox Lockbox Rapid Access System for new construction and existing businesses. What the system allows is for a box to be installed to a structure that has a fire protection system or new installation for a fire protection system, specifically a sprinkler system, fire alarm, or if there is commercial cooking involved, a commercial kitchen, me a hood suppression system involvement. When an alarm is activated, the fire department responds. But sometimes a problem or fire or smoke may not be visible from the exterior, and therefore a fire truck remains out of service as we wait for a key holder to respond and grant us access inside the structure to tackle a fire or maybe a sprinkler system activation where there's water pouring into the building and ruining the business within. If it's an existing structure, we're asking for voluntary compliance unless there may be a change of ownership or refusal to come to the structure when there is alarm activation. If that structure has a pre-existing fire protection system, then a box would be required. But this allows taxpayer dollars to be saved for manpower, wear and tear on our trucks, and it puts a fire truck back in service even quicker because we're able to tackle that problem, save the business, and keep our community growing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will now open our public hearing and ask for those who would like to speak in favor to come to the microphone if so desired. Seeing none, if there are those here in opposition, would you come forward and speak? Seeing none, we will close our public hearing, and I will ask for a motion from our commission.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters to approve the Knox Lockbox ordinance. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I don't know, Bryce, are you going to do these? I'm going to ask Bryce Woods, who's with our planning department, to come forward and present the next two items, to present them first, and then we'll open the public hearing.
The first item tonight is File Z21-11-02, requesting rezoning from suburban residential to agricultural residential to the property located at 159 Ward Mountain Road, Kingston, Georgia, Floyd County Tax Parcel M13220 and M13221. This is the staff report. This is a map of the two parcels, an aerial view up top and a copy of the zoning map below. Everything in the immediate area is zoned suburban residential. Can't tell it from this screen, but there is currently a house on the northern parcel, and there is a personal horse barn and a horse ring on the lower parcel. The top picture is looking into the parcel. The second picture is looking further out Ward Mountain Road. The top picture is looking back towards Kingston Highway. The bottom picture is looking across Ward Mountain Road. The request was to rezone from suburban residential to agricultural residential to allow for a personal horse farm. The two properties total about 20 acres in size. However, the ULDC already allows for a personal riding stable and allows for horses in suburban residential. So the request really isn't necessary, and we didn't see any reason to make a change. This does come with a recommendation of denial from staff and a 4 to 2 recommendation of approval from the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. We will now open the public hearing on this item. Those wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Louis Johnson. I'm the attorney, Ruth Ann Anderson, the applicant in this case. The reason for the rezoning request is due to the fact that she is trying to sell the property. And at $1.2 million, she has had two sales fall through because buyers wanted it zoned as agricultural residential to protect future rights. Should there be a change? In historical times, before the enactment of the ULDC, this property was zoned as agricultural residential, and the area around it, while not immediately adjacent to it, but to the north, west, east, and south, there is agricultural residential property located, large swaths of it, not just small parcels. So we're asking the commission to please rezone the property back to what it was prior to enactment of the ULDC.
Thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to speak in favor?
My name is Dennis Nolan. I live at 135 Ward Mountain Road, which is directly in front of this property that we are referring to here. And we're opposed to this zoning change. The first thing is the purpose for the...
Wait just half a second. We're going to have the opposition in just a minute.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm very hard of hearing. I couldn't hear.
Yeah, that's okay. If you're...
Okay, I'll take my turn.
Yeah, give us one second. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak in favor?
My name is Michael Morgan. I'm a resident on the west side of Rome. I'm not a neighbor of this property, but I do support an individual property holder to have a determination ability. And it looks like, according to this, the commission has approved the request already 4 to 2.
No, that's the planning commission. The planning commission makes recommendations to us, and we take the final action.
Well, if you're going to take the will of the planning commission as expressed by their vote in a 4 to 2 favor, then I would infer that you would be following the will of the people and acting accordingly and voting in favor of this.
I don't know what you're asking me. We'll listen to both arguments, and we'll make our decision.
But your decision should be based upon the expressed will of the people, okay?
You have four...
Self-government does not mean the government decides for itself what is in the best interests of the people, okay? It means that it listens to the people and it pushes the button that the people explain them to do.
Okay.
Okay?
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? If not, those wishing to speak in opposition.
As I said, we're opposed to the rezoning. We still have a hard time understanding the purpose for the request of the rezoning. According to the application, it says it's going from farm to farm, and there's no real reason for the need to be rezoned, other than a tax avoidance or, you know, the application, as it was submitted, has photographs that are very deceiving because it doesn't show any of the surrounding houses. Our house is located directly next to and in front of this property. And last summer, when we purchased the house, there were no horses on the property. They added onto our existing rear fence a fence area that they used for a pasture for two horses that they brought in this last summer. At that time, we experienced a horrible situation of flies and odor. The back fence that their pasture is, is seven feet from my pool deck. I have some aerial views here that you can look at. I don't know if you all can see it, but there's the... This is Ward Mountain Road here. This is the property in question here. This is my home right here. They sectioned off, this was my rear fence. They added this fence here for pasture when they brought the horses in. And it's about one and a half acres that they divided off here. There's, on the 20 acres that they have, there's plenty of pasture land that they could have had, but it made our pool area, our fire pit area, and actually our screened porches in the back of the house almost uninhabitable because of the flies and the odor that came from this pasture area here. I don't know if you all can see that with a...
Thank you.
I'm going to give you some idea. This picture was taken at my pool deck of the horse and the fence, seven feet from the fence to the beginning of my pool deck. They made a claim at the planning commission that the topographical property, the topo, does not allow for any other place to have pasture. This is a topo of their property and my property. I discussed this with a number of horse owners who talked about what they require for pasture land. And we all unanimously agreed that there's, right now there's this one acre here that they have, which is sloped. But right behind it, there's a two-acre plot, 2.2 acres that could be made pasture. And on the right side, there's another five and a half acres that could be made pasture. So this is the topo. I mean, regardless of this, this is clearly a case of spot zoning. And I know that, you know, the spot zoning creates a real problem. And when I was doing my research, trying to define the difference between the current zoning and the proposed zoning, I went on the computer and I put in Floyd County zoning laws, and I'm investigating it. It turned out I was actually in Floyd County, Kentucky. And it was very interesting that Floyd County, Kentucky, takes a view of the spot zoning, where they say that, you know, anywhere where there's property lines where there's two conflicting zoning districts meet, that a buffer standard should be met. And they have buffer standards based on going from AR to, you know, residential to agricultural and so forth with a chart. And that chart says that they require, as they call a buffer type 1, which will include, and it's a paragraph that says, "A minimum setback of five feet in addition to the normal yard setbacks otherwise recorded by the ordinance for the subject property. In addition, one deciduous canopy tree for every 15 feet or continuous boundary in a row of evergreen trees that are six feet in height, when planted and no more than 12 feet apart, shall be planted in the buffer yard with a continuous boundary between the subject and adjoining properties. All trees shall be planted within 15 feet from the contiguous boundary." I couldn't find anything on Floyd County, Georgia zoning regulations that state anything like this. But I think it's something that should be considered because when you have spot zoning and you have two adjoining properties with a conflict between the two zonings, there should be some sort of buffer area allowed to it. At the planning commission, we submitted a petition signed by 15 of the closest properties to this property, all of which were opposed to the rezoning. We still don't understand the purpose for this reserving, other than that I spoke to the potential buyer of the property, and he claimed that his wife had, quote, "six horses" that she wanted to put on the property. Well, to me, that was three times the original problem I had with the two horses. And I understand that's not against the zoning, but it was a real problem for me, and I think it is effective. And I think it has affected the value of my property considerably, when I can't even use my own pool in the summer. So I would say to you, if you feel like it's necessary to approve this, I would ask for some kind of, maybe a request that part of it be with a request that the pasture area be relocated, so that it doesn't affect my property and the other properties around us, because the neighbors all have the same problem. And they all agreed. It was 15, we approached 15 neighbors, all 15 signed the petition, and was submitted to the planning commission. And I'm sure you've noted that the planning commission, even though they voted four to two against, or in favor of this, that the notation on here is that the planning staff recommends denial of the rezoning because it's unnecessary for the desired use. And I think that's very strong. There is no reason to have to rezone this, other than maybe a tax avoidance. So that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I return your pictures? Okay, is anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? If not, we will close the public hearing, and I will ask Commissioner Maxi, who represents us on the planning commission, as a-
I'd like to ask the staff-
Yeah.
Bryce, if we could, questions, any other area in the zone that they asked for, the agriculture zone in this area?
The nearest parcel is, I'd say, at least a quarter mile away, or possibly a half mile.
And with the current zoning of suburban residential, they can have horses there. Is there a limit to the number, or how does that-
One per acre.
One per acre?
Yes.
And how many? They've got 20 acres?
They are. If you combine the two parcels, there are. The ULDC also requires that a personal riding stable be at least 50 feet off of the property line. It's my understanding that the applicant's attorney has already merged those two parcels, which removes that center property line. So it's actually more like 200 feet off of the nearest property line with the neighbor. I'd also like to point out that the rear setback NSR is 25 feet, so I'm not sure how the neighbor's pool is seven feet off the property line.
Okay.
In your opinion, would it be spot zoning?
It would. There is no other in the immediate area. Staff also had a concern that rezoning agriculture would open it up to some commercial agricultural operations that might have a hindering effect on the neighbors, if you start getting into, you know, commercial cattle farming or something else.
But as it is zoned now, they can use that horse barn, they can have horses on their property.
They absolutely can. And staff offered to write a letter stating such.
Okay.
And that was the only, to our understanding, that is, the only reason why they wanted to change the zoning was for additional horses?
To have horses in general, to my knowledge. That's the extent of my knowledge about the request. I'm not aware of any other reason to request the zoning.
Good evening, everyone. In some of my discussions with some of the realtors that have been involved with this particular application, as to my memory, that there was a request, well, a desire, if you will, to potentially have some other far- farm or livestock animals on the property and be able to have that flexibility. But I think one of the concerns that we had as a staff was that we didn't know exactly what or how many and so on and everything. And again, the horses are, with the riding stable, are allowed, you know, by right in the, with the current zoning and everything, so that- and so we've all had some conversations with some of the folks that have been involved with the application. So I did want to just kind of mention that.
Thank you, Art.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'll make a motion to deny the request.
So motion by Commissioner Maxi to deny the request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wallace. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Bryce, would you do item three, please?
Yes, sir. The second item is file Z21 hyphen 11 hyphen 03, which requests rezoning from Office Institutional.
So the motion was denied. Can I make one comment? The way this roof, the ceiling is shaped, if you're sitting out there and talking or whispering, it, we hear it. So just out of respect for those who are speaking at the microphone, if we could just hold down the talking in the audience. Thank you.
Hey, Bryce.
Yes, sir. The next request is file Z21 hyphen 11 hyphen 03, requesting rezoning from Office Institutional to Community Commercial for the property located at zero Alabama Highway, Rome, Georgia, Floyd County Tax Parcel G13Y 011A. This is an aerial view of the area with the parcel outline in red. The lower map is the current zoning map. The applicant also owns the adjacent parcel that is already zoned community commercial. He has plans to do a convenience store slash fast food development, and that would require a community commercial zoning. It would also require that the parcels be merged. The parcel to the top is looking in from the intersection of Woods Road and Alabama Highway. The parcel at the bottom is looking up Woods Road. There's a fire station just up there on the left. Top picture is the existing convenience store across Woods Road. Middle picture is looking across Alabama Highway, and the bottom picture is looking further out, Alabama Highway. This is a survey of the parcel as it sits. This is the proposed development. As you can see, it does include a convenience store and two other retail spaces on either side. In this case, it looks like they're intended to be some sort of a fast food type or quick eatery. This is the application. This did come with a recommendation of approval with conditions. Those conditions were, first, that the parcel be merged, and second, that there be no access onto the public right-of-way, which is currently undeveloped, on the west side of the property. But if that public right-of-way ever were developed, it would lead right into a suburban neighborhood, which concerns staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bryce. We will now open the public hearing on this, on the third item. If there are those who'd like to speak in favor of this recommendation, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, are there those that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I will ask Commissioner Maxi for a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Waters to approve. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We have a couple of resolutions tonight. The first one is to adopt a resolution agreeing to be bound by the memorandum of understanding between the state of Georgia and certain local governments, government entities concerning the national distributor and J&amp;J settlements, and directing the execution of the acknowledgement and agreement to be bound by memorandum of understanding, subdivision distributor, settlement participation forum, and Jansen settlement participation forum. Would Mr. McCord, would you, or maybe Ms. Harmon, like to comment on this at all before we vote?
I can comment just briefly, Mr. Chairman. Floyd County, as well as the city of Rome, have been participating in the last several years in nationwide litigation over alleged improprieties on behalf of manufacturers and distributors of opioids. The litigation's been very complex. Mr. Andy Davis of Brinson, Askew, and Berry has represented both the city of Rome and Floyd County. We've been monitoring litigation. The proposed settlement is one that both Mr. Davis and I do recommend. It will involve payments made both to the state of Georgia, the city of Rome, and Floyd County over quite some period of time, but it will, there's a formula for payments if enough of the participants in the litigation approve the settlement, that over a period of years would result in well over a million dollars. It's hard to say exactly how much would come under the formula. It depends on the number of participants in the settlement. But it also takes into account factors like the impact of the opioid epidemic on the particular community. And unfortunately, we are at the higher end of that scale. So overall, as a community between the city of Rome and Floyd County will be receiving a fairly decent size settlement in order to, the proceeds would then be used for either law enforcement or opioid treatment programs. So it does come with my recommendation.
Thank you very much. Any questions on this resolution? If not, do we have a motion on resolution one?
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve the settlement resolution. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second resolution, which was moved from the consent agenda, it was listed as item four on that, is to consider requests from the county clerk's office to establish parking fees instituted in ordinance 2-17 regarding parking in prohibited zone reserved, parking over the designated lines, employee parking without authorized permit, and backing into as parking space. The proposed fee amount would be $15 within 14 days for any of the above violations, and the proposed fine would be $7,750 after 14 days. This has been discussed at our last meeting. Do I have a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters to approve the second resolution. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under the chairman's report, have two appointments I'd like to ask you to approve tonight. The first one is consider reappointing Wade Hoyt IV to the committee to oversee circuit public defender. This will be his first full term. The term will expire September 30th, 2026. Do we have a motion on the first?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Maxi to approve item one. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two is consider reappointing Chris Twymann to the development authority of Floyd County. This will be his second term. The term will expire December 31st, 2025. Do I have a motion on item two?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Maxi to approve item two. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do any of the commissioners have any comments or reports that you'd like to make on any of your committee assignments?
No report.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. McCord, do you have anything under the manager's report?
No, sir. No report.
Thank you very much. Ms. Harmon, anything under the attorneys?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Elrod, is the consent agenda in order?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Waters to approve the consent agenda. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There's no old business to consider. There are several items under new business, and I'll ask Mr. McCord to present those.
Yes, sir. Item one is consider memorandum of understanding between Rome Floyd Development Authority, VTI of Georgia, Floyd County, and the Floyd County Board of Tax Assessors. This is a expansion abatement, total amount 29 million, 35 full-time jobs with a pilot fee for $36,375 over the 10-year period. This has been approved by the development board.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on item one?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Maxi to approve item one on the VTI. Please call the roll.
Before you call the roll, Jamie, would you tell us again how many jobs that is?
35 full-time jobs and 29 million total investment.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two is consider memorandum of understanding between Rome Floyd County Development Authority, Ball Metal Beverage Container Corporation, Floyd County, and the Floyd County Board of Tax Assessors. Total investment for this project is 52.3 million, 70 full-time jobs with pilot fees and $64,813 annually. I might add also, they paid full price for the purchase of the property that we did several, several weeks ago.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on this, on item two?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item two with Ball Corporation. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, consider memorandum of understanding between Rome Floyd Development Authority, Integrated Fiber Solutions, Floyd County, and the Floyd County Board of Tax Assessors. It's a total investment of $30 million, 40 full-time jobs, new full-time jobs. This is actually a phased project. Phase one, 13.2 million. Phase two, 8.5. Phase three, 8.5, for the total of 30. And the pilot fees will vary with the different phases, from $16,500 annually up to $37,750 annually.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item three?
Vice Chair Buckets approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item three. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four is consider recommendation from purchasing to approve purchase of furniture for the Braves Stadium terrace from BOS Inspiring Workplace Furnishings in the amount of $45,195. This was budgeted in 2017, Splos, and will close out that Splos project at the Braves Stadium.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a motion on item four?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item four. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
So motion carries.
Mr. McCord, before you finish, I think it's really interesting, this is exciting times with our economic development. Have you got a tally over there of the jobs created and the investment, or can you do-
Just for these three?
Yeah.
I actually do not, but I can do that for you real quick. So 110, 145 full-time jobs with 82, 110 million in investment just on these three total. So that's pretty good. Pretty good work by Missy and her team.
Thank you very much. That's good, good work. Go ahead with item five.
Yes, sir. Item five, consider recommendation from purchasing to approve the purchase of a solar-powered message board for emergency services from ProLogic ITS Incorporated, the amount of $17,595. This will include a budget increase of $7,595 to the GL account number 33560-670040. We just had a bad budget number on this. This was the low bid.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on item five?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item five. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And item six, consider recommendation from airport commission to approve a wildlife management agreement between Richard B. Russell Airport and the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services and Wildlife Services not to exceed 7,500. This will be the second year. We did this last year to help with wildlife that does interact with the runway, making our runway as safe as possible.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion on item, item six?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Waters Wallace. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes. Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And item seven, consider request from Public Works to purchase and install eight solar-powered radar signs on the four county roads in the amount of $48,445 as part of our match for the $200,000 L-MIG safety grant received earlier this year. This will include a one-year data plan for remote access to the data, which will be renewed each year, probably 2,000 annually. This renewal rate includes all eight signs. I'll just add that this is a good thing going forward. We've had a very difficult year with traffic incidents and fatalities, so hopefully this will help traveling public see their actual speed rates.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. Is there a motion on, on item eight?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Maxi to approve item seven. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
During our caucus tonight, we did go into executive session to discuss several property matters and one legal item, and no action was taken on any of these items. Does any other business come forth through? If not, we stand adjourned.
Thank you. You want us to leave this room out here?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Bryce.